Good evening and Happy New Year. Thanks all for all of you coming to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for January 3rd, 2023. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to say the grace and do the pledge for us, if you'll stand.
Let's pray. God our Father created heaven and earth. God we come, dear God, only for your presence. We thank you, God, for how you blessed us, O God, throughout 2022 and your blessings into 2023. God, we pray, O God, you look on this board in the mighty way, dear God. Give us, dear God, the resources, the ability, the knowledge, the wisdom, the understanding, to be able, dear God, to do the things that this community needs. And that we'll be able to find the funding, dear God, to fund these projects. And God, look on every one of our departments, continue to bless, dear God. And God, look on our attorney, look on, dear God, our county administrator and all, everyone, dear God. And everyone that's here in this building, dear God, we bless every home they got represented tonight. Look on them in the mighty way, God. We so graciously thank you, dear God, for all that you've done and doing right now. Continue the strength of God in Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the flag, to the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have to slow down your pace there a little bit.
Yeah, sir.
Everybody else is still doing it like nursery school. So you've got to keep that same pace.
Yes, sir. I have a way of talking fast sometimes. You're right. I have a way of talking fast sometimes.
You did fine.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that the attorney didn't pick me down here, but I've been staying.
Huh?
I don't mind. I appreciate that correctly, yes, sir.
All right. Moving on to approval of minutes for the December 20th, '22 regular board meeting, December 13th, 2022 workshop. Is there any corrections or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, offer a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. File zero. We're not making anything here. Uh, we got a public hearing at 5:15. Uh, I'm gonna skip over to item number nine. Mr. Baker, if you want to come forward.
Say, Mr. Chairman, this is something that we had to do at the end of the year and stuff. It's where that this year we have, uh, and it's the, uh, the closing of the books for the, uh, 21, '22 fiscal year, uh, for the clerk's office. The balance that we have to submit back to the Board of County Commissioners is $144,472.69. We are requesting if we could retain 40,000 of this balance to address, uh, the conversion issues that we're facing at the finance office. And, and we had set aside money, if you remember back during the budget, uh, for addressing those. What we're finding out is where it's, it's gonna be a lot more laborious than what we had originally thought. So, uh, if we could retain 40,000 of these funds to take and address that, any funds that are not needed for this purpose, it would be returned back to you at that time. It's where this is, uh, we had put the money in the budget, like I say, but most of that was to address the company that we're converting to. However, it's gonna take some work from our current vendor, uh, as well as a lot of overtime from our staff in order to get us there. But hopefully, uh, very soon, we're gonna have our program up and running and we'll be ready to go. But, um, if I could just have the permission to use those funds for that, it's, like I say, the 140,472.69 would be returned to you at this time.
Any, any comments or questions of Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Perkins.
Uh, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Those conversion funds, and you want to do what with those? Could you let us out, give us an idea of what you're gonna use those funds for?
Yes, sir. It's where that we're, we're moving to a new finance software. And it's where that, uh, the money is already in the budget, uh, it's that the program has already been paid, uh, the training has already been paid, uh, but it's gonna require some work with our current vendor to get our, our, uh, our files and everything in the format that it can be used by the new vendor. Uh, just because our, our other stuff is in a different language and everything. So it's where it's, it's just more labor intensive than we had originally thought it was gonna be. We thought it would be a lot, uh, a lot simpler process, but it is, it's gonna take us a good bit. Like I say, any funds that we don't need for this, it would be returned back to the board. It's not that we would be using it for any other purpose. So this would be to cover that the cost of, of needed for the current vendor, as well as overtime for our staff and, and doing some of that as well.
Okay, for the upgrades of, of the system, uh, to meet that need for, to work with the vendor and then your overtime for your employees.
Correct.
Okay.
When does it look like you're gonna be online with us?
We're open soon. We're, we're in contact with both vendors and it's where they're, uh, in preparation, trying to get this stuff so that we can start converting the files. And we'll just be doing it one section at a time, uh, so that we don't have everybody in disarray down there. We can, we can do it one, uh, like one, one person's and then move on from there and just keep rolling into the next, uh, the next set of...
Is, is doable?
Yes, sir. It is. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's gonna be doable one to one or the other, even if we have to put this stuff in line by, line by line.
I was gonna ask him, Mr. Chairman, this is the, the program that we started really last year.
It is.
Uh, I think Baker County's got the same software.
It's where they do. We have, uh, yeah, Baker County, Bradford, Levy, Ukichobee, Sumter, a lot of the counties and a lot of the sheriff's office and the sheriff's office already, has already made their conversions and, and stuff. So, uh, we're in the process of getting ours. Yeah. I think, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're leaving an MS DOS-based system and going to a more of a Windows-based.
I believe you better add actually.
Yeah. So the, the, that conversion on the labor side of the languages, those don't talk to each other, so it's gonna eat them up with some labor, I believe.
So you're going from a floppy disk to a thumb drive?
Yeah. Y'all have any other questions?
I'm okay with it.
Mr. Attorney, do we need a motion to let him keep the 40,000?
Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn to keep that extra 40,000 out of the 144,472 dollars. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You got your 40 grand there, Mr. Baker.
And, and again, any part of this that is not used for this specific purpose, it'll be coming back to you. It'll be going back into your general fund.
So a check made to Franklin White when you returned. Just kidding.
You got a lot of y'all excited over this for me. You got a hard time.
We'll go ahead and move to, move back to item number eight and do the, can we start before 5:15?
Yes, sir.
We can't? All right. Well, let's move on.
On 10.
Item number 10, discuss with possible board action, establishing a sales price of surplus property located on 74th Street. Mr. Scott.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you have in your packet, uh, a appraisal done by local firm, uh, the price on that.
Talking to the mic.
Sorry, can't hear you. I was gonna be a smarty pants. I'm trying to get it. Um, well, you've got it in your packets. You had a appraisal done on this piece of property. There were some outbuildings, uh, how, old houses dilapidated and, uh, recommendation by the appraiser is to remove that before you set a price. Um, the, you saw the appraisal, um, and, um, I guess my recommendation is to, um, let's get quotes on the removal of those, uh, outbuildings, if that's your wishes, or we could do it in-house with, um, our guys, but, um, that has a cost also. So, uh, whatever the wishes are, so we'll need to know if we want to remove the buildings and to set a price.
Do, we don't have a price from an outside source to, to do it yet?
Yes. Oh, not, not from, not for demolishing, no.
Yeah.
But I would, I would suggest that we build that into the price, um, you know, that comes out of the revenues we get from the, the sale.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
Um, Mr. Scott, can we just adjust to, I had to ask our county attorney down there, what our percentage is to go below appraised value to just take into account the removal of the buildings? I mean, on the bottom there on, on the appraisal, um, for the public's purposes, I don't know if they read that or not, or if they have this, but the overall conditions of both buildings could be considered a detriment to the marketability of the subject. Demolition of both buildings and removal of debris would enhance the marketability of the subject. The estimated cost for removal of these buildings should be considered for make, for marketing purposes. The cost should be deducted from the market value provided in this report. The report is 45,000. Could we just reduce our ask price to expedite and take into account the removal, removal of those prob, problem buildings?
Yes, sir. Four to one.
Is there a percentage?
No, sir. It's just, but if you're gonna do it below, you know, that it's just gonna take the four to one.
I mean...
Super majority.
I had just, Mr. Chairman, I had just kinda kicked around 42.5 to estimate. I mean, I don't know what three bids would look like, but, um, I recently had one tore, tore down. It cost me a mobile home. It cost me 2,500. So I was, what I was using as a benchmark to have it torn down and hauled off, so.
I think that's easier than tearing it down and hauling it off.
Can you keep it there and take bids as is?
You can.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just reduce the person. Yeah.
I think Mr. Mobley's saying, can't we just go with the 45,000 and see if somebody will pay?
Yeah, but I think that, Mr. Attorney, on the process that we have in place, that we can't, we're not allowed to get into a negotiating, we gotta take high bid or, or a bid, or we can't get into a negotiating process with a...
That's not exactly right. I mean, if they come in and you have all, all bids that are lower, lower bids for that, you've, you can choose to go to one of those low bids, but we, we just haven't done that during the process. I mean, if I wasn't going to be, you know, if you're gonna set a minimum, you know, on this, I think the best thing to do is, is to have an estimate, uh, like you're talking about, and go ahead and set the, set the number lower. I mean, that way, you know, it's a clear thing that we can just, you know, move forward with. Like I said, it's, this is an appraisal, you know, appraised value, but it's also surplus property. So if you set it lower, you move, you move the property and it, take a four to one vote to set the number lower.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hale.
I think it'd just be clearer.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Lynn, just, I don't have any interest trying to get someone out there and knock these things down and spend any more money on it, but whatever number that is, looks 42.5 or...
I mean, that's just a number that I had.
Yeah. Where's that piece of property, where's it at?
Map in the back of your, your pack.
If you go from...
So Mitchell Road.
You know, going out Mitchell Road toward, uh...
Lashley.
It's between Mitchell and 90.
Right, I think the other way.
Yeah, it's north of Mitchell, south of 90.
Yeah. Is that the paved road that goes by, that goes south to 90?
I don't know, is 193 paved, Mr. Hale?
No, sir.
No. Not all of it. I mean, my, my thoughts, Mr. Chairman, were just to reduce the purchase price by 2,500 as our ask and let it roll instead of, I mean, if we go to the bidding process for removal, that's just gonna drag it out two more weeks. We're in a declining market, um, you know, and I, I understand our guys are probably gonna do the work, but, uh, demolition work is not normally our cup of tea.
Right.
So I'd rather leave that to the demolition professionals myself.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Provatt, or just a consensus of the board?
No, sir. I'm gonna need a motion to set a number for this one.
I'm, I'll make one. I don't wanna put a pastor on it, but I'll make one.
For 42.5?
I'm, I move to set the price at 42.5 for the 74th Street.
Second by Mr. Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Okay. Make, make note in the record, it's five zero, please.
Yes, I was gonna say that. Thank you.
And the fire has to be moved, the building?
As we have it right now, yes, sir.
Okay.
If they choose to.
If they choose to.
If they can keep them.
Moving back to item number eight, at 5:15 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider a development agreement with Project Wave. Mr. Provatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a public hearing, so, uh, Chairman, opening the public hearing. If people would, anybody that anticipates that they may give testimony regarding this, would you please stand to be sworn? Okay, seeing done at this time, I'll go ahead and proceed. Gentlemen, what you have before you is the, uh, same development agreement that we had at our last meeting. You recall that the last meeting was the first of two public hearings that were, were required to be able to pass the development agreement. Now have had the advertisement and it's scheduled here today for final consideration. The language that you have in the agreement itself did not change, uh, in that we, you know, we talked about before, well, let me back up on that. We talked about before that the language that was in that agreement said 70 feet, but I told you that we were redoing it to be 50 feet. So for the easement area across there, so that's the real language change that has been made in here. All of the substantive provisions, uh, have not changed since the last time. Now, what is in addition here is, if you recall, there were a few exhibits that were old exhibits that had drawn on them, uh, the easement and the, uh, site plan showing it at 70 feet. The new exhibits that you have attached in here are, show, uh, the, the site plan and the easement, uh, description and the easement drawing all show, you know, the correct 50 feet now. So that's really the only difference that we have is to attach those three exhibits, the site plan, the easement plan, and then the easement description. Otherwise, it's, it's exactly the same. I note last time we didn't have any comments about it and I've, you know, communicated with the, the other side up there because we didn't have any comments and the other lawyer and I had agreed on it, uh, just noting for the record that they didn't fly down from Minneapolis to be able to do this, you know, because there were no substantive changes. So what I need from y'all this evening then is, you know, a motion to approve the development agreement in the format that is before you. I will tell you, after such motion, uh, won't be, you won't, the chairman won't be signing it tonight. What I will do is insist that we send it up to them to have them sign it first and then bring it back to, you know, for the chairman's signature. It won't come back before the board, but I want them to sign it first before we send it up there.
Is there any question?
I mean, before we sign it, excuse me.
Sorry. Is there any questions, Mr. Provatt? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any more board discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
Um, Mr. Bailey's here. We ever, all parties agree that 50 feet will work for what we need?
Well, that's... I think the reason they had it so wide before was they were including the road.
And that's their part of it, which I was gonna say.
What they actually, well, what the lawyers discussed before, as Mr. Bailey comes up there, is that they had, um, originally put in there in the 70 feet, they were gonna put a 24-foot paved surface through there. When we discovered that and we went back to Mr. Bailey to have them, you know, get the engineering, you know, across there, they ended up somewhere around 90 feet total for area, but the 90 feet would include, um, their road and then our now 50 feet. And Mr. Bailey is one that talked with their engineers, you know, to come up with those numbers. If I stepped on your toes too much, Mr. Bailey, go right ahead.
Pretty well. Um, in, in short, the 50-foot easement is only for the utilities, county's utilities. It does not include their road or anything of their, uh, requirement. So that will accommodate our water, our sewer, uh, potential gas, uh, fiber optic with, uh, Swanee Valley Electric and Swanee Valley Electric's funds.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
If not, do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, moving on to Commissioner items. Did I get everything, everybody? Did I miss anything?
I'm sure you got it.
Moving on to Commissioner items, uh, Mr. Hancock wanted me to also mention legislative delegation will be here January 13th at 3:30 here at the Judicial Annex for anybody that wants to come. Also, I know Mr. Baker got up and talked about the money that he was returning back, but Ms. Jordan at the tax collector's office is also returning 123,031.95 to the general revenue. Or wherever we so choose to put it, which I, I wanted to bring that up too. I, I was wanting to see if we could put, put that money into contingency instead of backing the general revenue because we got some unexpected expenses coming up for some elevators and I guess, Mr. Scott?
Right.
I don't know, is Mr. Gamble here today? I think he's turning in.
He's turning in some too, but he didn't send any paperwork yet. I don't think he's...
Mr. Gamble's, what he does that, he, he does it quarterly, I believe, monthly or quarterly, and they'll be figuring, calculating what his is and let us know what that amount is. But it doesn't actually come back. He just does it, not a lump sum.
I got you.
Keith, did I get that right?
I'm okay, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need to, Mr. Provatt, do we need that in a form of a motion to do that and put it into contingency or is that just a consensus?
You have to be presented with it first. With Ms. Jordan, if you're gonna consider that, you can go ahead and ask that to be a budget change and approve that.
How much was hers?
123,000.
Well, we got the 140. You wanna just, we didn't really discuss where that was.
Yeah, well, that's what I was doing was both of them.
I got you.
That's kinda what I was doing.
I got you.
Both from Mr. Baker and from Ms. Jordan. But what'd you say, Mr. Provatt, if she's not here?
Well, it's really not being presented. I thought you were presenting your point of information, so it's really not being presented here tonight, so I'd rather carry it, carry it forward.
Okay. So we'll carry it forward.
Um, but, Mr. Chairman, but Mr. Baker did present, so that 104,472, we could address that tonight by placing it back into contingency and just not Ms. Jordan's.
Correct.
Well, we can do that. That'll be fun.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You're saying that it's going back in...
If you're saying that it's going back into contingency, it is, it would essentially be going back into the general fund.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I was just wanting clarification. I didn't know if you were talking about it going back into reserve as opposed to, to, to the, the contingency or if contingency is where you're wanting, it would still be in the general fund itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to get clarification.
All right. Thank you. So do we need to vote on that, Mr. Provatt?
Please, sir.
Do I have a motion to move 104,472 dollars that Mr. Baker's returning to a contingency?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion five zero in favor. Also, under Commissioner items, uh, I think each one of you got an, an email with the, what would you call it, Mr. Scott? The legislative...
Right.
Appropriations request.
Right.
And if anybody wants to make a, or wants to comment on it tonight or send something back an email.
I, Shannon's here. I, I met with Shannon a long, I forget my days, but when I went and picked up my book the other day and, um, I'll reiterate to him what, what my, him and I's discussions were is, is on that list and I don't have it in front of me, but for me, our number one, my number one priority is infrastructure improvements at the Catalas site. Um, we have, and, and for me, the, my reasoning there is we have already identified end-users. It's a, it's nothing speculative. Um, you know, that input into our infrastructure will be a direct return on our investment almost, almost immediately. You know, the, the US 129 project will get there. It's gonna happen, but I, I don't have a, I don't have a multiple end-users right away like, like we have out at the Catalas site with several projects that have already been identified that are going out there that are gonna need that, those infrastructures. And that's, that's just kinda where I, and I understand some of those asks can come from, you know, multiple pots of money, um, but if there's any ask that would hinder or come from the same pot of money as where a Catalas site improvement would be, for me, that pot of money, I would prefer go toward the Catalas site and the, you know, we just did a developer's agreement right here that, you know, we're promising Project Wave some water in, in 12 months and, you know, we're gonna need some money and horsepower to get that done.
You said Mr. Bailey might speak on this?
I, I just think that we need to run this list by him before we, before he finalize the numbers so that he confirms the, the amounts we're, we're looking at. I don't think he's seen this list yet.
Okay.
But I'll follow it with Mr. Bailey's team to make sure we got good numbers. Is there anything that struck out in that list you wanna leave off? I mean, there's, I mean, we don't wanna ask for, you know, $40 million worth of stuff if we're only gonna, that's a, off a big ask, but, um...
No, I didn't print it out.
I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Lynn. I mean, we've got real-time, real-business things happening out there and, and as they grow and, and that will attract others we know already, I believe has, I do think that's at the top of this.
Absolutely.
I, I think Mr. Norris would contest this. Uh, that's, that's one of the biggest things that we, we get asked.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm in complete agreement there, so. Uh, I got the list here. I don't, I mean, we're just asking, it's, I didn't see anything on there I wouldn't ask for. I just, I guess, once we get the list together and, and get it to, uh, Mr. Bailey or Mr. Grissom or whoever we're gonna give it to.
Right. First step, we get to Mr. Bailey first, look at the numbers. For example, the, the first on the list, the wastewater treatment plant and, and distribution, that number may not reach it. I mean, it may not be big enough, um, but, um, certainly that's something we need to get done. That's gonna be a vital part of the whole operation out there is wastewater.
Well, and I think everybody was pretty much on Christmas break and New Year's and so now we can get back to it, so.
Right.
We just need to make sure we have it by January 13th on the, I guess, legislative delegation.
The next couple of days, we'll, we'll finalize this list. Appreciate the work Shannon did to, to get this together. Uh, we'll get that to Mr. Bailey, give him a copy tonight before he leaves, um, and then email it out in the morning, make sure he's got it and tweet those numbers. it out in the morning, make sure he's got it, and tweet those numbers. Recirculate it, recirculate it to the Commissioner also, and then to Mr. Grissom and his team and anybody else that needs to see it before we give it to our representative and Senator.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Land.
What's the deadline on that? Thirteenth?
Deadline is actually two.
I'm just saying the legislative delegation will be here on the thirteenth.
Before we send that to Tallahassee or other powers, will that, will we have time for that to come back before the board?
Not, not before the thirteenth. We will, we will do revised version and email it out and just share a comment back to us would be helpful.
If you would, just ignore the statement that Mr. Scott just said. He may, you may have a list out, you know, to you, you know, for comments and stuff, but I would suggest that we have just a quick special meeting or something to, you know, to go over and finalize the list before the thirteenth.
Unless, unless you go with, you know, the list like it is.
Mr. Bailey is, you know, trying to get, we just need to get the numbers, you know, closer nailed down and all of that type of stuff. And then I think we're trying to seek a, you know, more of a prioritization, you know, once you be able to get there. So I think it may be more appropriate for Mr. Scott to arrange, you know, a special meeting at a later time.
Fine. So do we need to go ahead and just set a meeting for it?
That, or we can go through it tonight and be done with it.
Good with that.
I'd be good with that.
I mean, we're on, Eric won't put our clock back up there, so I don't know what time it is. Here's five thirty.
The only thing I seen was I just want to move number two to number one there. It'd be a top priority for me and I guess for the rest of the board.
Yeah, for, I mean, I'll just tell you, I didn't print the list off and I don't have it on this email, but for me, I would, this is just me talking, but the seventeen million dollar ask for construction, new water and wastewater plants with the collection and transmission lines on US one twenty-nine north, for me, this year, I would scratch that altogether because I don't want that to interfere with our ask for what we need nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, there's fifteen million dollars right there that is infrastructure affiliated with Catalyst Site. Now, some of these we know we won't get, some of these are, I think Mr. Bailey would agree, are long-term ask or long-term fixes to some short-term problems, but I just don't want, I don't want a seventeen million dollar ask or to interfere with a pot of money that I'm asking for fifteen million dollars out of the same pot. And, you know, I see Mr. Shannon coming to the podium and I see the Commissioner's turned his fan on, so he's sweating. We start talking about money and the Chairman over there starts squirming.
You know... And, Mr. Chairman, to kind of comment on what you're saying, Commissioner Land, I think what we're seeing and maybe, I hate to get Jimmy up here because he talks too much, but I think what is, what we're seeing is we're seeing that commercial industry growth at the forefront now versus that retail.
Retail, with the economic times, probably.
Right, right, yeah. So, here we go. Yes, sir.
Just to have some information that might be helpful after my conversation with Commissioner Land. I like what he's doing. He's taking things that, funding requests that could go into the Catalyst Site because he's thinking about investing in that site could potentially in the future, based on agreements that are signed and whatever happens, end up creating more tax dollars for the county, generating revenue, a return on investment over time. Some of these projects are great projects, but they're not quite in the position that some of the projects are at the Catalyst Site. So he's, and I agree with moving some of those down on the list. Now, here's something that I think we need to get some additional information from Mr. Grissom. In our meeting last week, Mr. Grissom indicated that there were pots of money underneath the budget where some of these projects may fit into one pot that is available and others might move into another. Now, we don't have that information from Mr. Grissom. I think it would be important to get it and then categorize all eleven of these things so we know which projects would come from which pot. Then we could clearly see if there is an overlap, maybe in one area where we're asking for too much that may jeopardize some of this funding that we'd rather spend at the Catalyst Site or think it might be better to spend there, then we might, the board might say, okay, let's take that out and table it. So it helps us, I think, put a little different spin on it to see how they're all grouped together and then make some decisions because you might be able to ask for all eleven and they might not compete with one another, or it may. But without that misinformation from Mr. Grissom, I think it's a little difficult to get to that tonight. You could, I'm not saying...
Well, can we send the list to him first and get his...
He's already got a copy.
He's already got a copy?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think Shannon, you said it because I've been through a little bit of this and you're right, some of these will not compete with one another.
That's correct.
So there are different asks there.
Commissioner, you're exactly right. However, if we're going to present information on the thirteenth to our state representatives, I would not, I would only present to them, my request would be to only present to them Catalyst Site infrastructure. I mean, and I'm going to use this for an example, and I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief yet, but I kind of got put on the spot here. I mean, on there, and I don't know if the public has seen this either, but on here is a regional fire training structure facility at the request of two million dollars. Regional training for six surrounding counties, surrounding counties could contribute to support operations. I'm not there yet. I mean, you know, that, while that is probably a great project, I'm not ready to promote that above infrastructure at the Catalyst Site. Infrastructure and the jobs and the avalorum and motor fuel tax and sales tax, all the return on that Catalyst Site infrastructure could add revenue back to the budget that we may not need two million dollars from Tallahassee. We may, we may only need a million, not that the project cost would go down, but we would generate revenue back into the budget so we can maybe co-fund it. You know, I understand we need to get with the Grissom, but if we're going to, you know, solicit money the thirteenth, for me, it's all Catalyst Site. Water sewer, water tower, potentially adding on to our water treatment plant, the capacity. I mean, we got to get fire flow, we got to provide enough water to cover fire flow to wave, vendor holds. We truly, I don't think Mr. Bailey could tell us truly today what that capacity of our current water treatment or plant could handle to the fire flow that their engineers are requiring. So, I mean, we got a lot of unknown variables out there and that might not be enough money for those.
Question for Mr. who? For Shannon. And I think we've done this, did we do this, did we narrow it to three last year? I think that's what we did.
We narrowed it, it was a pretty short list. I don't remember.
One or two or three or something? I mean, I don't disagree, some of these, I mean, there's some that kind of four or five fall underneath that same, like you say, fire. I see that and then I see like some...
I mean, there's a couple of projects on there I've never even heard about.
Rail crossing. I think there's like different...
Well, that rail crossing and the holes out there, too.
At one sixty-nine, that's the same.
Mr. Hale, I think you bring up a good point. When we submit budget appropriations, there's really no limit to what we can do. We could ask for the moon, but what we're trying to do is work with our lobbyist, Mr. Grissom, to try and right-size this. And right now, it's not really clear if this is too much or too little, so I do think it's a little important to get his feedback, which he promised to give us. But there may be an opportunity for us to ask for all of it or part of it, or it could be Mr. Grissom comes back because he has another gentleman on his team that does a lot of work with budget appropriations of Mr. Brett, who we spoke with. He will review this, too, and he may come back and say, he may suggest that we go for a short number of things. We just don't know that yet because we haven't given their, been received their feedback. So we're in this balancing act to try and figure out what the right amount is or the right number is and what pots and what options we have. I think our general view from that meeting was to try and get to that point and have the list right-sized or whatever that is and have the board make a decision on that. If we were to accomplish that, then we would take another step to consider, what are we going to present to the delegation or members of the delegation and try and get an idea of what their feedback may be before the thirteenth gets here? So we wouldn't just walk into the delegation and say, here, where Mr. Grissom was suggesting that we communicate with them in advance to kind of see where they're at. And for each of the representatives, there's different factors for the Representative Schof as there is with Senator Simon. So a lot of those things are just kind of unknown and we just need a little time to confirm, like the cost of the water tower, I may have said it too much, prioritize it the way you guys would like to see it, but also categorize it. If we can get some time to answer those questions, then I think it becomes an easier, some easier decisions on your part to say, you want to go for all of it, part of it, and what does it look like?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Scott?
Go ahead.
I didn't interrupt, but keep in mind, too, on the thirteenth, when we talk to the delegation, we should be talking about legislative appropriations. We talk about grants that we already have in the works and any future grants we think we're going to apply for. There's really more than just one category we need to consider. And I would suggest the Chairman speak on this at the delegation hearing, SCOP and scrap and the other DOT funding sources, they need to make sure they've got the budget for those projects also. So in my estimation, it wouldn't be just a conversation with them about these top three things. It's the whole list of things we got all through the system. You know, the FDAC, the Department of Agriculture money, the FERDAP money, the library money that Betty needs, I mean, all the different pieces, need to make sure that we talk about all those. In addition to legislative pieces or the Catalyst Site and those improvements. So I think input from y'all tonight is helpful to say, okay, Catalyst is a top priority. Okay, we got to work on those numbers, get it to Grissom, make sure that he gives us some ideas about where the pots of money are hidden, and then we can come back around and call another meeting to let y'all approve that if you'd like.
Did he give you any indication of how soon he'd be back to you on that list?
He did not, but I expect him to do it tomorrow.
Yesterday.
That would run out of time.
Gentlemen, the other thing that I would add is although we're trying to get this list in good shape before the delegation, they're actually not due to the Senate and the House until February the thirteenth. So whatever this thing looks like, even now up until the delegation, you could change it even after that before it's actually submitted, you know, that week of February thirteenth. So we've got the time. If we go into the delegation and you walk out of that with a different feel or how things should be ordered, then we have plenty of time to reshape it before the final is submitted to the House and the Senate.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Scott?
Also, historically, on the delegation hearings, we don't necessarily speak about always about a bottom number. It's this is the projects we need done and they help us steer on what direction to go with that even. So it's good to have a general idea, but, I mean, if we can get five million here, ten million there and twelve million there, it all adds up. But, so I wouldn't get too wrapped up into the exact numbers because we'll be pulling from different pots to get there, I'm sure.
Right. So with that being said, do we need to call another meeting here? I need some direction on what to do.
Well, Mr. Chairman, like I said, I think to, for y'all to have an opportunity after it's been tweaked by, you know, Mr. Grissom and been tweaked by Mr. Bailey, for y'all to have the opportunity to get together and discuss it before the delegation is going to require a special meeting for y'all to do that.
Let's go ahead, Commissioner Land.
Mr. Chairman, and this might be a turning question for Mr. Vavat, but, or Mr. Scott, but tonight, I mean, I know that three of you have, I think three, if I was counting right, maybe five, have agreed that the Catalyst Site is number one. Can we, so we don't have to call another special call meeting on or before the thirteenth to kind of go down that list? I mean, we're just going to be merely talking to them. So can we just all agree to, when we speak to them at the public delegation, that our ask is Catalyst Site infrastructure?
Make that part of the conversation.
Yeah, we, we are, we're narrowing down the numbers and the estimates with our engineers. We're narrowing down what our dollar figure will be, but right now, we, these are the three or four things that we have identified are projects. We don't, we're not a hundred percent sure on what dollar figure we're going to ask for because we got some time to determine the dollar figure, but these are the projects that we need.
Right.
And just have that, have that conversation with them. So, I mean, I feel like I don't want to get lost in the weeds on the fine details pressuring the thirteenth as our date. Really, we're just, I mean, it's just a delegation, we're just asking.
Conversation.
It's a conversation, it's a public conversation. We can fine-tune it with the nuts and bolts up till February...
Fifteenth?
Thirteenth. So we got some time to fine-tune the numbers.
I mean, we just all need to be on the same page as...
Yes, sir.
The same.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Perkins?
I don't have a problem with going this route we're going and capitalizing everything, but I really don't want to see us lose out or leave out fire rescue, Mr. Land, because as we grow, we're going to need, our team is going to need to be upgraded and be, you know, trained. So I would say we don't, I don't want to see us leave out our fire rescue. When you got an emergency, that seconds count and if we are not properly prepared, then I'm just kind of wondering about that now.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Land?
I think you misunderstood me. I don't want to leave them out, but that is probably the first or maybe the second time that I've ever heard about that project. I don't know where it would be built, I don't know what surrounding counties would attend, I don't know who would be responsible for maintaining that building, I don't know where these folks would stay when they came to use the facility, are these day classes? I mean, I don't want to leave them out. I just don't know enough about the project to feel comfortable going to Tallahassee asking for two million dollars. That's all I was saying, but I'm not against the project. This year, I'm against the project because I think we got some more important stuff, although it could come out of a different pot of money, but just, I got some unknowns.
I know it sounds like it's just us down here talking, but I don't disagree. I mean, I did see a fire truck on there, I think.
Yeah, I mean, there were several projects we need to talk about.
There's different pots there, I think, I mean, obviously a fire truck, I think, for that station that's going to be going on the line hopefully very soon. That would be more of an ask for me than maybe the training center at this time, I don't know. But I think what you'll find out once we have those talks, like everyone's saying, I mean, there's going to be different pots of money and they won't, one won't cause another to not go through. But I do think we need to narrow it down to those different, three. In my opinion, I wouldn't go above maybe three solid asks.
I just, I just feel like Swanee County is going to have a better chance of landing four projects if we ask for six. If we ask for twelve, we might get two.
What was I seeing, something on there by the airport, Mr. Scott? What was that? I seen aviation...
Airport MRO training program?
Yeah, that's...
It's just supposed to be discussed.
Jimmy can answer that one.
We all read the newspapers, so you never know what opportunities may arise, so that's a very popular area right now and a lot of companies are looking for places to house those type of facilities. We couldn't house certain facilities just because of size of our airport, but then again, there are certain facilities and, you know, maintenance operations and things like that that we could house. And so there has been a big interest with certain people about something in this area. It's something we've talked about for a couple of years, but everything takes money to do and, but there's a lot of interest in possibly working with some players in our community to possibly do something here. So that's, and that's coming from our lobbyists who's been very involved in that area.
And I think there was a large number, wasn't there? What was that number they showed us at the conference we went to for twenty-three billion or something crazy, some crazy number in that area? So I'm good with, like you guys are saying, I just, I think maybe like the road project there, the railroad, I think that's going to be a separate funding from the water and sewer.
We have a meeting on that tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that's going to be, so we, like, three or four, like Commissioner Land said, if we can pick three or four priorities, I'm good with that.
One thing, gentlemen, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Norris.
When we, when we had our meeting and I agree with what Shannon says, you know, I know we're trying to... know we're trying to, we've got a little time on this, but at the same time, I want you guys to keep in mind, they're meeting with every other county as well. And all those counties are going to be putting some numbers right in their face. And Mr. Furry said, I need to remind y'all of that and Mr. Scott because of, he's on top of things back there, so I made sure I carried that message up front. But speaking with Mr. Bailey, we would like, if we're considering a catalyst site, I think we can have some good numbers by then and we would like to have documentation to put in their hand at that date. So if you can, whether you have another meeting or not before then is fine, but we would like to be able to, if you choose those projects, we just don't want to tell them. We want to kind of have something for them to support our case. So if you would grant us permission, I guess, to do that, if you so choose those projects that we're talking about and when we're talking about water and sewer out there, so.
So, well, let's just set a date to come back and discuss it then.
I think that's what Commissioner Land's trying to do.
I was trying to avoid.
He's trying to avoid, but I.
I think he just likes to look at me or something. I don't want.
Who, me?
I was trying to avoid that.
You fired us off, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins.
To Commissioner Land, you looking at that item two in six, what item are you looking at, that on the council? I was at the daily, looking at some things about it. What were you looking at doing?
I don't have.
Two, three, four. Two is construct new wastewater, so the public understand what we're talking about. Number two is construct a new wastewater plant collection line system and spray field for catalyst sites, $9.3 million. Construct a natural gas distribution plant facility at the catalyst sites, $3 million. Repair rail crossing at 169th Road, $1 million. And then construct a half a million gallon elevated storage tank, water tower, if you will, for $2 million.
And Mr. Chairman, and I think for the public, there's nothing wrong with 169th. It's more, not a repair, more of an improvement for the truck traffic that we anticipate potentially stacking up on US 90, turning into there. I mean, you know, that'd probably be a DOT partnership thing, but there's nothing wrong with the railroad. It would be some type of improvement to get those trucks off of 90 and over.
Jimmy's got some info on that.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a problem, I won't say there's a problem right now with the road, I think there is, but that was an old county constructed, paved road there. You've got Bender Holt's coming online with a new log line doubling up the traffic, truck traffic there. You got Project Wave there. You've got some other potential projects there that, that road's going to have to be redone as well as the crossings got to be done.
When we had our call with the railroad, they said it had to be fixed within the next year if we're going to continue to use it. So now.
Maybe it is a problem.
It is, it is, it is a problem. Now, the ultimate solution is way bigger than that and Mr. Bailey is quite aware, he's been on some of those meetings as well, and it's a way bigger deal. But they did say, within this year, we will have to address that crossing or it's, they're going to have to shut it down basically. So we will have to do something before this year's over, so.
That's why you get paid the big bucks. Yeah, you're correct.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity too, I think the construction of that crossing was for residential use and not for industrial use. That's the main, the main reason of the breakdown.
Well, there's, there's three or four issues there. You got a road issue, you got a US 90 issue, you got a rail crossing issue.
Right, right.
So there's several things there that's got to be considered. So again, do we want to just go with those few items and end it tonight or do y'all want to let, I would suggest letting Mr. Grissom weigh in on what he thinks might be available. I don't want to cut ourselves short either.
Yep, I agree.
And if it requires a 30-minute meeting to come back and do it, I'm good with it. I mean, we can do it later in the afternoon if y'all want.
Yeah, because I, I would love to hear, Mr. Chairman, I would love to hear, again, we keep going back to these different pots. Like I say, I don't want to sell ourselves short because I see, I mean, there's still sports complex on here. I mean, there's, and Mr. Scott can tell you, I think we've been successful in getting monies there also for the, I think it was one year we got money for a sports complex and for the Coliseum.
Right, two different pots.
Yeah, two, there's just so many different ones. I don't have a problem, like you said, making it a priority when our representatives are here.
That's all I was trying to say is.
Just say, hey, this is a big thing for us and then when we get with Grissom, let him work on the others. Does that make sense?
That's exactly what I was trying to say, but lack of words is come 13th, hey, these are really, 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 really important to us, these, important to Commissioner Land anyway, the catalyst site stuff. But we have these other projects here that we would also like to do, that we feel like come from other pots of sources of funds that we'd like to see this done as well. Sportsplex development, air, I mean, I don't have the list, but other stuff that could be sourced from other funds. That's just kind of what I was wanting to do, to avoid another special call meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, I'm good. I just want to make sure the catalyst site's first and I don't want to sell ourselves short by not asking for some of these other things that's important to the community as well, but yes, I'm with you on the catalyst site being top priority. So if you want to just, do we want to just go with the whole list and hand it to them or do we want to just break it down to just what's really important to talk to them about?
Can I, I want to ask, Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is, what, the 17th?
Mm-hmm.
And we really don't have to have, we're just meeting with them on the 13th, which like you said, Commissioner, we just really just talk about the catalyst site and the needs out there, but then we could fine tune it to have time at a regular meeting to discuss these others. Does that, does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, I mean.
Commissioner Land.
Yeah, my thought process is, I agree with Commissioner Hale. I would, I would emphasize the importance of the infrastructure and the need, the immediate need at the catalyst site. I would also add the caveat on the 13th to those guys is like, hey, we also have some other projects that we feel like could be funded from other sources of funds that we really would like to see done as well. Potentially a fire station training, potentially addition to the sportsplex, potentially yada, yada, yada. But these handful right here with the catalyst site is what we're begging you for, but these other ones, we would really like to see done as well from other sources outside of the funds that can be used for these. Because let's face it, DEO and CDBG probably aren't going to give us funds to develop sportsplex, correct Shannon? So we want all those, all those monies to come from, to be used at the catalyst site.
Ms. Betty, you want to say something?
Just, I just wanted to say, I think that they are used to multiple priorities in different areas. And this is just from a public library or a library point of view. When they allocate specific funds, for instance, for public libraries, it can only be used for public libraries. So it's not really like you're putting one thing down.
Right.
In favor of another, you see what I'm saying? It's like, they, they have all these different pots and they're used to multiple priorities. They expect it. When we go, there is one day during the year when all the libraries go to Tallahassee. So we get to talk to all of them and say basically what we need. So I think that to say or have that on the list is not really going to undermine what you really want at the catalyst site.
Thank you. Ms. Matt.
Mr. Chairman, I like what you said, just have them on the list, but maybe just have the catalyst site highlighted for that discussion.
Just highlight or have them re-numerize these, the same list, but just, or maybe handle more than one list. This is, this is our catalyst site, this is our recreation, this is whatever, you know, but this is, this is what's really important right here. I'd be good with that.
And you could tell them we can narrow that list.
Let me just say this, I've never been to one, so I couldn't tell you what you do. That would be my first.
I'll tell you what to say.
I'll need that.
We'll give you a script.
That's what I need.
I think the commissioner spoke loud and clear, catalyst is number one. We don't have to forget about the other things. It's like certain things that we need to do more research on. As an example, the training for the fire rescue. I have the same questions. I haven't had a chance to sit down Chief Hand about what that whole thing encompasses on the economic piece of it, not just the cost of it, but what's he going to bring back to us and not just the training part, but I mean, there's training available now, what I understand for that. But if we can do one here and draw people here to spend money for us to help supplement what we do, then that may be a good thing. But we're, in my opinion, we're still in the conversation stage just about that project as well as a few others. But just want to get y'all's input, so we can narrow it down and look at the pots with Mr. Grissom and see kind of where we are. But I think it's very clear catalyst site is number one and the other things will shake out in different pots, like Ms. Betty said.
And there you have it.
Are we good with that?
I just say anything fire, no disrespect to anything on here, but I'd just say a fire truck, it would be my first, first thing before building another bill, like you saying, some other things.
I think, I think Mr. Grissom will give us a lot more insight into some of that, but I'm with Commissioner Land. I just, I really want to see the catalyst site, get what we need, but.
Yeah, I think we all want to see the catalyst site.
Mr. Vavat, what do I need to do here?
If you're not going to try to get it back together and do that, I would just put the list in Mr. Scott's hands to move forward and he can have a nice discussion with you and we'll have you a nice little script to go into whenever you get to the meeting on the 13th.
Sounds good. We're done with this then, ain't we?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
Good.
I guess we're down to, is there any additional, there's no additional items pending? Did I miss something?
That will happen.
Nope.
No, sir.
Moving on to public concerns and comments. Mr. Burnett, you filled out a form?
Yes, sir.
We'd love to hear what you got to say.
Oh, I know you are.
Name and address for the record.
Well, a comment, on the front page of your agenda, it says I have one minute. On the back page, I have three minutes.
We're going to split that.
Let's have four minutes, but okay.
I just need your name and address before you get started.
Okay, Tom Burnett, 1298 192nd Street, Live Oak, Florida. Okay, I want to talk to you about having an effective program to remove the illegal signage in the county. I'd like more time, effort, and money put into this effort. A memorandum of understanding with utility companies to have them take down those signs on the utility poles. Volunteers, contractors, employees who travel around the county. Enhance the penalties and enforce your ordinances against these people. And with that, I'll take comments.
Well, I just wanted to ask, being more specific, what kind of signs? Are you just talking about the little signs that you screw to the poles or?
Absolutely, the ones that are in the, on the ground. They're, they're in violation of the county ordinance, state ordinance, federal ordinance, you know, whatever, based on what, where they're located.
Well, where I'm going with this is the little business signs, you know, that people put out there, I realize they're, they're not legal, but they put them out there because that's the only way they got to direct people to their business.
No, I'm not talking about directional signs necessarily.
Yes, sir.
I'm just talking about advertising signs.
You're just talking about these little yard signs and.
Okay, if you're directing a sign that says, you know, my, my business is down this street, that's, I don't have a problem with that, but it's these advertising signs and.
I think he's talking about like.
Yard sale, well.
Well, not, not, yard sales go away. It's the continual.
Yeah.
And they stay there for years.
Yeah, internet service.
They put them up and never come back again.
They put them out, they don't ever pick them up.
Well, why should they? Okay, there's no, what's the penalty for leaving them there? You know, and if you were to, if you were to write an ordinance that says, if you put it on the right of way, there's a $10 per day rental fee per sign, now you might have their attention. But anyway.
I'm just wondering how you, how you, how you going to enforce all this?
Then pull them up and throw them away. Write an ordinance that says these signs are trash and anybody can pick them up with impunity. What's the problem? You know, Jacksonville, Jacksonville has got a clean, a beautiful committee that goes around and pulls down signs. Anyway, I've been here 22 years, you know, you may have signs removed once every three years maybe. Not, you're not putting forth the time, effort, and money into maintaining this ordinance. Get rid of the ordinance, make it legal. I mean, if that's what you're going to do, you have de facto made it legal. If you don't enforce the law on ordinance, it's legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move along. Mr. Administrator, any more comments?
Yes, sir. First of all, Mr. Norris, he needs to remove his lay down yard sign he put up a while back. I should have picked it up for you, I'm sorry.
Don't get him started.
I know. Back. Okay, I want to give you a quick update on the solid waste decals. They've been ordered, Chad, I'm sorry, Chad's been working on that real hard. We should receive those sometime in January and mail them out in January, early February. The current ones, in case there's a time delay, would be, be able to use the old ones up till April. Hopefully we'll get them out, the new is out and all cleaned up before that. He's done a good job in, on our, we talked about tonnage and such last meeting or so ago. He's ran some numbers on that also, which ties into this. Our tonnage has actually decreased by 7% in the past four months. The city of Live Oak's percentage increased by 12% in the past four months. So we see a difference. Along the same line with the decals and mailing them out, last time, there was over 300 people that the envelopes came back because of poor addressing. This year, he did, had a study done before they went out and there's 109 that would have come back. And so the idea is to clean up the record, the proper praiser and tax letter's office, making sure that that address is correct. Chad, he can correct me whenever I say it wrong. But anyway, because of going back and catching those numbers of people that weren't getting their tax bills and able to pay their assessments, it's like $68,000 we collected because of that when we started doing it this way. So the, the implication of the decals, several things that we accomplished by, by adding those. One is less garbage we collect from outside, getting paid for what we need to get paid for, and also getting the bills out so we can actually collect our fire and solid waste assessments also. So anyway, just a little information there. Chad, anything else you'd add?
Those are.
Okay. Thank you. 68th Terrace, that's the road there by his old bad cop distribution center. We had that ready to be paved. The 27th Anderson Columbia is going to come out and do the milling and pave it. We started looking at that and I think the, we need to revisit if we can get it a little bit wider. If we got truck traffic coming and going on that road, we need to revisit that before we get that paved. So North Forest's back to work this week, so I'll follow up with Mr. Pittman on that, see if we can get a little bit, make some shoulders. The width was pretty tight for two trucks passing. I'm not a truck driver, but in just my opinion, it looked like it was a little tight. I'm not a truck driver, but in just my opinion, it looked like it was a little tight. So just want to let you know that we put a pause on that, we pumped the brakes on that project that was going forward, but I want to be, make sure you knew that. The, passed out a study that was done on behalf of DOT for aviation to talk about our economic impact for local airport. The, the highlights are basically 356 jobs are created by the airport, 19.5 million dollars in payroll, 29 million value added, and the economic impact of our airport is 46.9 million dollars. So a lot of people don't even know it's there, but it plays a big part in what we do here and just to review that information. Want to share with you also, there's, and I have not read this and just handed to it not long ago, but remind you that Martin Luther King celebration will be on Martin Luther King Day, the 15th, I'm sorry, the 16th, the Monday, be a parade and other activities. And so just be mindful of that as well. Want to point out too, that we got word, I think it was last week, week four, my weeks are running together already, but a job, job growth grant was awarded to Swanee County for 1.9 million dollars for water treatment and distribution out of the catalyst site. So Shannon, did I get that right? Good. So the guys are doing, or this team out at public work or administration has done a great job in getting that stuff done and hats off to those guys for what they do. But that's all I've got unless you've got any questions?
I don't. Is anybody else?
No, sir.
Mr. Revat, any comments?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Perkins?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, just grateful that, to see everybody here in this new year, 2023, and thank God for making it over.
Bob?
Well, good, Perkins. Hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Hope you see things, good things coming from the county.
Commissioner Land?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would just reiterate Commissioner Perkins and Commissioner Mobley's sentiments, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. I would add go Knolls to that. We've got some really big things happening here in Swanee County for the betterment of our community and the people that live here and I'm looking forward to what 2023 is going to unfold for us.
Absolutely. Are you going to say anything about the Seminole?
Yes.
He better.
Yes, I am.
He's on.
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Hale?
Go Knolls, go Knolls, go Knolls. We don't get to do it very often, so.
Well, that's true.
And really, and y'all, a lot of folks don't know, but a lot of the, Mr. Scott and his mothers are here, they're all Gator fans. I mean, they're, me and Travis on an island over here.
Wait, 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 wait. Excuse me, excuse me. I was a Seminole fan before I was popular to be a Seminole fan.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, see, you just went up the ladder then a little bit, so.
And but did, did you get the score, did you get the score of the Gator Bowl game?
I don't even, do they have one?
I don't think they do.
Yeah, I don't think they have one. In all sincerity though, I do want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and I tell you, we were, we do have some exciting things going on and navigating through this together like we did tonight. That's going to be our challenge and we're going to do it. We're going to be successful for the people of Swanee County. That's what we're going to do. And as always, pray for your fellow neighbors. Never forget the reason why we're here, folks. Ain't no doubt.
Happy New Year, everybody. I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same say no.
So I'm going to catch.